... Melissa Goodmarket?
Here.
Lloyd Johnson?
Here.
Please draw your in-class relations. To legislative agents who live in the United States of America and who are very elected for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any open form requests collected? Okay, as far as agenda items, with respect to the number 10C, we'll add the new policy amendment with personnel policy. And also add an organizational chart and personnel change for the city. Those will come in front of 1, 2, and 3 on the seat. And then also on number 12, new business, we'll add 12C, vision, mission, purpose. Are there any other questions in reference to the agenda or any other additions to the agenda?
Yes, we need to add siding of the Boy Scout building in the Lions Park. We can add that under other works. So be 3.
3. Anything else?
We were also going to discuss a town hall meeting on November 27th. But add that to upcoming meetings or new business.
Yeah, the upcoming meetings will go be April what again?
27. April 27th at 7 o'clock.
7 p.m. Any other changes to the agenda? Have a motion for the agenda has changed?
I make a motion to open the agenda with the amendments. I'll second that.
Okay, Jill?
Hi.
Melissa?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion carries by a vote. Agenda accepted. Consent agenda. Any discussion on the item consent agenda?
I make a motion to open the consent agenda.
Motion for the consent agenda, just a second.
I'll second.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries by a vote for the consent agenda. Public hearing for Parkview Care Center revenue bonds.
Are you from Parkview?
Yes.
Oh, great. Great timing. Mr. Mayor, how nervous council, good evening, and we're here for the public hearing on this matter. Now, last month, as you recall, we called for the public hearing for tonight, and the project was discussed a little bit then, and I guess I don't really have much more information on the project itself, maybe that can be discussed a little bit tonight as well. Normally with these revenue bonds, these are a financing tool for nonprofits to construct hospitals, senior center facilities, non-anything store nonprofit facility. In order to have the debt obligations be exempt from federal income taxes, the interest thereon, a public hearing is required to be held under the federal tax regulations. So that's the meaning of this public hearing tonight, it was published in the newspaper earlier in, I think in March, so that was all done pursuant to the regulations. Now, as you recall from last month, the proposal is for Parkview to issue, or to have cities on their behalf issue revenue bonds for their new facilities in Buffalo. And Montrose has been requested to issue $10 million worth of revenue bonds. Now, of course, the city of Montrose has absolutely zero liability for this debt, it's not considered a debt of the city, it's just, it's done as a mechanism to help these nonprofits finance their facilities on a tax exempt basis, so it's cheaper for them to borrow from a bank at this interest rate than a formal bank home. So that's why these things are done. Wright County normally issues these bonds as well, City of Buffalo does as well, it's my understanding that the city is issuing a whole bunch of other bonds this year, so they don't have any room for this set of bonds. The reason why it's supposed to be a $10 million issue is a federal regulation says that bonds can be bank qualified bonds if they're $10 million or less in a calendar year. And all that mean, and I don't really know what it means that well, but all it means is that banks, it's a little bit more attractive to their investment portfolio if bonds are bank qualified. Once you get over $10 million, then they're not bank qualified anymore, and the interest rates may be a little bit higher. So that's why Buffalo could not issue bank qualified bonds this year, because they're issuing, they already issued $6 million or something like that, so the $10 million issue would take them over their $10 million cap. So this is often done, I've seen in my practice where a neighboring city is requested to issue on behalf. Now, we make sure in email and in conversations with Parkview Care Center, I've been talking to their attorney quite a bit, that the city's costs, from my review and the public hearing, or the public notice publication, are all covered by the borrower, so there's no out-of-pocket cost to the city whatsoever. So that's covered there. So I think tonight the appropriate thing to do would be July, I guess one more thing to add on that, there will be a bunch of documents that are going to be produced as a part of this transaction. The city will technically issue the bond and then loan the proceeds to the borrower, and so there's a loan agreement that's going to go along with that and some other documents that Parkview's council is going to draft, once they get more of a handle on their costs of their project, is how I understand it. So this will come back before you to approve those documents, but once again, it's not going to be a liability of the city whatsoever. So tonight, I guess the appropriate thing to do would be to open the public hearing, formally take the testimony from the representative of Parkview and anybody else who wants to speak on it, close the hearing, and there's no documents to approve, so really just closing the hearing after that, no vote or anything.
Do I have a motion to open public hearing in reference to the financing for the Parkview Care Project?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing in regard to the Parkview Care Center revenue bond. I'll second.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Hi.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries by a vote, this time we'll open the hearing. For public comments and public questions in reference to the Parkview Care Center being funded with funds sought through Montrose. This man?
Do you want me to?
Please come up.
My name is Catherine Nyberg, I'm here in Montrose. I just have a need clarification. On December 23rd, 2014, the Wright County Board of Commissioners voted unanimously to support or to float the $10 million revenue bond. And how does that interact with the request for Montrose to also help $10 million in revenue bonds?
Sure, and I have an understanding of that, and I feel pretty happy to add whatever is needed. From my understanding is that this project is much more in excess of $10 million, it's in $20 million, maybe high $20 million for all the things that are being done. And so there's sort of an aggregation of cities coming together to do their bank qualified portions of the $10 million chunks at a time. So Wright County issued theirs at the end of 2014, and I don't know if they can issue it, I don't know if they have any qualification for 2015, so.
2015, they're doing their own project?
They're doing their own project, so that money's probably sitting in an escrow account somewhere waiting for construction to begin, and then that will help fund that in addition to the Montrose's $10 million chunk, so it's an aggregation.
Okay, I had another clarification in the publication of the Montrose Council, in the Wright County Journal, it just said that we would be in support of the $10 million bond issued for Parkview Center. However, in the public hearing notice in the paper, it has three parts. It has 1, 2, and 3, and it also addresses the issue that Wright County, the healthcare facility revenue refunding bonds will help to refinance a bond, they want $4 million. So that brings the $10 million down also. What is this refinancing for? I just need clarification, it's very unclear to me as to what is being proposed.
Yeah, that's a good question. The three parts of the project is, there's basically two parts, there's the new construction that's going on up there, and that's a certain dollar amount, I don't know exactly what that is in the end, and then there's a refinancing of their 2006 debt that they did.
For the nursing home?
For the nursing home. So that, to refinance that, they basically have to pay off those old bonds, and that's another amount of money. So if you add the two together, that's equal to the $10 million. And there might be more to that, because it's a 20-something million dollar project, to my knowledge. You can't speak totally for that though.
All right, well, the project has already been named, so it is on the way. The project has, some dollars are involved.
Yeah, I'm sure, I don't know anything about that part.
She know any? Please go ahead and speak to those questions.
Sure, all right, thank you, I just need clarification.
Any other questions? That's okay, you can have your questions.
No, I'm just here to listen to clarifications, thank you.
And I'll have a representative, your name again?
My name is Kathy Anquist, and I'm the Chief Financial Officer for Elam Care, which is the parent company of Parkview Care Center.
I've been here.
All right.
I got better.
Good, good. Yes, Parkview Care Center is refinancing some old debt, and we have to do that as part of the project so that we have one lender. We haven't narrowed that down yet, but Brummer Bay is a possibility, and yes, it is a $20 million project, and it's, right now, we're looking at an 81-unit senior housing building, and then also some remodeling in the nursing home, and it would be attached to the nursing home. So it's on the same campus, and it's part of the same corporation. It's got a name, Park Point, nothing has started yet, there is no construction at this point, there's been architect plans, and we've been paying for that, but no construction yet. And hopefully that answers, I don't know if there's more questions.
Are there any other questions from the public? Thank you.
Your attorney is correct that bank qualified financing does help us get a lower interest rate, because the bank gets a benefit from some of the interest being exempt from taxes for them, so they typically pass along a lower interest rate for us, which is very nice for our situation, our project.
Thank you.
I'll stay and answer any more questions, thank you.
And I'll call one more time for anything from the public. During the, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to open the public hearing. I'll second.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Hi.
I vote aye, motion carries by a vote. Public hearing is now closed, in reference to the Parkview Care Center open hearing. This time, we'll move to the 2014 financial statements for the audit that was conducted for the city by Abdo Eck and Myers, and we have Mark Eppenstein and Andy Berg with us here to speak to that.
Hello, the mayor has said, my name is Mark Eppenstein with Abdo Eck and Myers. Andy Berg and myself, the partner on the engaging, had met with the council at 5:30 at a finance committee meeting, and walked through the management letter, as well as the financial statements, went through a lot of the detail, summarized that, and answered any questions at that time. In the end, through our audit procedures, I issued an unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements, so a clean opinion, and no other compliance issues that were noted. So I won't put any detail in there, I can field any questions from council or.
Are there any questions in reference to the audit that was conducted? Any further discussion?
All right, so you may be here to do that, and if the council would like to approve the audit report.
Now I need a motion to accept the 2014 financial statements and audit report provided by Abdo Eck and Myers.
I'll make a motion to accept the 2014 financial statements.
Second?
I'll second.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Hi.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion carries by a vote, will accept the 2014 audit report from Abdo Eck and Myers, and thank you, appreciate it, Mark, for your coming in and explaining all that and accepting our questions for that as well.
All right, thank you. Yes, the audit, Abdo Eck and Myers, really appreciate the effort of the council as well as the city.
All right, thank you. Thanks, Mark. This time we'll have the Wright County Insurance Report.
Want to have anything to?
Negative report?
Thank you.
I have a couple questions. We've had some mess, our vandalism here in town, do you know anything about that?
We talked about the park or?
Different parks and stuff, yeah.
Yeah, the parks here, it's on our edge of patrol, and we've had some stuff with driveways having catch-up and musters stuff put on them, and that's on our edge of patrol too, so I don't think we've had anything, at least to my knowledge, in the last week and a half or so.
So is it more in-town or in the neighborhoods?
It's more.
I mean, I know we're just up here in town, but what, in the neighborhoods, is there going to be more patrol thing, because I don't see patrol anywhere in my neighborhood?
There's only one car on, and I get around frequently, so, I mean, I get around to the neighborhood as much as I can tonight, but except with calls and stuff like that, it's hard to, yeah, I try to get at least every neighborhood once or twice a night.
What's our patrol status during school hours, with the travel to and release from school hours for the men's school?
I'm sorry?
What's our patrol status for, the time prior to school start and the time after school starts, I've had some complaints about people going around the crossing guard there on Montrose Boulevard.
Before school, there's just the one area car to the southeast, and then there's a southwest car, so Montrose Falls in the southeast, so just the one car, and then after school, there's a car here from 10 to 2, and then they go to Coqueta, and that's just the one car again from 2 to 6:30.
My concern is that, and maybe we need to address it in a different way, but if we continue to get complaints about that, my concern is per se, do the kids cross there?
Yeah.
It might be a little bad, make sure that we address those. The other thing is that, and we may want to work this also from your side, Michelle, is to talk with the school and have them appraise the crossing guard, that they just need to get a license plate?
Yeah.
And you guys can follow up in reference to that?
Yeah.
Great, I sent an email to Greg Finley, who's our contact, and he was going to get into it also, and see if we needed to have a car come down here again in the mornings and sit off to the side and watch for a while again.
So that's on your list?
That's been on the list since last year. There's been a movement, we've had this discussion many times during council meetings. Justin is actually putting up, worked with the county, correct, Justin, to put up crosswalk signs, how's that coming along?
Why not? The county indicated, I have a preference, they were putting up last fall, I believe they were, I guess, I did not, I have verified myself officially, they're all.
Okay, and now we're looking at putting a new crosswalking, I don't remember where we were at with that, Sean? The crosswalk across there?
We had received bids late last fall, we had put that project on hold till this spring, and I just haven't had time to readdress it, unless you guys want to approve contingent on what was proposed last fall.
I think we need to finalize the proposal first.
Okay.
Melissa, any other discussion on that?
Another thing that I have noticed, and that this is a discussion that maybe needs to happen with the school, is that, I understand it's Minnesota, it's cold, but the crossing guard can't do much, sit in the car away from the corner.
The crossing guard only comes out at 7:45, I don't like that.
Yeah, but they're staying in the corner for a while. Yeah, yeah, no, I know they're always supposed to be there a certain time, but I mean, there's not much that can be done. I know I had briefly, very briefly, talked with Mr. Stephens about the possibility of booking into a walking school bus. He didn't seem too crazy about the idea, he seems to see that our crosswalk is fine, which I disagree with as well, so maybe we need to have more discussion with the school and the children.
Because he actually came to us regarding crosswalk.
Yeah, last year. I talked to him about the walking school bus, and he said, no, we have someone that walks across the street, and that's good. So.
You're volunteers or crosswalks?
Isn't that? Well, they're teachers, so, yeah. Yeah, and we actually stood up there last year a couple different times, myself, I and Mark and Lloyd, watching the cars go through, and I was the officer there.
But my question is, until you actually take the flag and go onto the street, the cars are not required to stop, or those kids are at the corner with the crossguard, are, I mean, are they? So it's not until the crossguard goes out into the street when the cars have to stop?
That's one part of the problem.
Right, yeah, okay.
So this is where the crossguard is not out there, is that what you're seeing?
Well, even when the crossguard is out, the cars will through it.
When she's on the middle of the street with the flag?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. But it seemed to get better, like I said, last year, we had an officer sitting there, so things did improve, but now, you know, kind of.
I know, I say, no, it's not great, like 80 mil or something.
One other thing that we may want to look at is, I know this is in some areas, they put a rolling stop sign, or a stop sign, obviously in the streets, and that creates a stop sign at that point. Not so much requirements on that, Sean, do you have any?
Being that's a county road, it would be a permit required by the county, I can check into that with them.
Yeah, we can check for that, and see if it's possible to put out a rolling stop sign.
Sure.
That would at least give us a stop sign, maybe a little more beef in, you know, any cars that aren't obeying the crosswalks as well.
Okay, I'll talk to the county about that.
Thanks, Mr. Highway. Any other discussion on the Wright County Insurance Report? Let's move to the reports and recommendations, city departments, commissioner committees, first, monthly activity reports. And let's start with Jill.
All right, so I attended the 2014 Affinial Equalization Training, which is, that was for our meeting on November 27th, for the tax affiliate equalization training, I attended with Greg and Melissa, and it was very informational. I also attended the Montrose Day Committee luau, which was a very fun and successful event, there was a special meeting held on the 23rd, I attended, the goal setting meeting yesterday, Saturday, sorry, which was a full day vision setting meeting with all of the council, that I thought was very beneficial to all of us. And then last night was the Montrose Day Committee, which we are making, I had we on.
Michelle?
Perfect, I was there Tuesday, we're updating the master plan, same as Jill's Saturday's retreat, on the school, community ed, I was at the community ed meeting, where we just talked about all the groups and organizations get together, tackle attendance for the gym, which is good attendance, it's coming to an end, because it's getting nicer outside.
Can I ask you a question? Let me bring that up. Was there any talk there about the heavy more classes in Montrose?
They have discussed it, yes, and.
Because I know I made a big point with them in the fall about the Lego classes, and then also the classes at the upper Buffalo, a lot of the ones for younger kids, they start right at 3:30, so that doesn't even give Montrose kids a chance to get there. And so now, the one class in specific that I pointed out, the Lego class, they actually have offered here now, which, so I'm hoping that they do offer more, because they weren't even giving Montrose a fair chance, and Hanover too, but Hanover does a lot more classes than Montrose.
The classes that they have, that they've talked about, that they have done for Montrose, they don't have the noise?
Yeah.
So they're trying to continue to have the classes?
Yeah, and maybe it's just the type of classes, I don't, I don't know, but, or is it something where, you know, they can make a statement like, hey, we're offering more classes at Montrose, because maybe if parents have, you know, for the past five years, they've been on classes, they just assume there's some classes. Well, because, yeah, like when we get to the end, so it's always karate, which is fine, and then all the other classes they listed are usually in Buffalo. So it would, I think if they specifically did a Montrose on that, it would be.
They just have more parents.
And that's what that lady cited last night, so I was surprised, actually, when the spring came over, or whatever, that they had it in Montrose for this time, so I was very happy, and then the science section, they saw the end of that, so.
All right, I attended the Swanson Mediation Meeting with our legal team and the union and Park Swanson. On the 3rd, I attended Parks and Recs and the Volunteer Meeting, attended the City Personnel Meeting, Legal Review Meeting, the Special City Council Meeting on the 9th, and the City Council Meeting on the 9th. Wright County Chamber of Congress Meeting on the 12th, that was very interesting to find out that a lot of the other cities do not have available lot space, so that may be beneficial for us, provided we can move some of our developers into bringing up some of our lot space. Justin and I were at that one, and that was kind of an eye-opener to find out how little lot space is available in the surrounding communities, so that may be very beneficial for us, if we can open up some of that lot space and leverage our housing market study to that end. I also attended several Boy Scout events, the Wright County Mayor's Association Meeting, which was an overview with some of the community programs that Illinois provides, particularly with respect to seniors and youth, which was very interesting. Hopefully we can move some directions toward that, if we have the ability. I also attended the luau, I've got to blow my conk, did the Board of Appeals and Equalization Training, which was a joke. Attended another city council meeting, attended a council meeting in the cities for the Northern Star Council, met with Dr. Firsman, who provided us with our goals training that we did on Saturday, and then also attended the Montrose Waybridge Chamber of Commerce Meeting at Jackie B's, and the Environment Relief Association. Committee meetings. Lloyd?
Well, I attended the council meetings and the special council meetings and the retreat, but then I also attended a meeting in Buffalo on the Trailblazer, and they seem to be, the state that funds it, it seems very helpful as far as what they're doing and how they're progressing. As a matter of fact, they're even considering maybe building a bus steeple and a dispatcher in Buffalo, and that seemed to be pretty good.
My concern there is to ensure that we're represented at that meeting. Uh, we do fund part of YCAT fund as well. I want to make sure that, that we're getting the bang for the buck out of that. And then also being able to address to our citizens that what services are available and how they can get those services, so that we make sure that we can publicize that and we get that service for our, for our residents. So that's one of the key pieces I have to make sure. And if you're not able to attend those YCAT meetings, then I want to make sure that we have a staff member attend those. Uh, I don't know the other council members have that availability, so I appreciate you being able to go with us. Anything else? Melissa?
Um, I attended the Board of Appeals and Equalization Training, um, the Luau, the regular special.
And come blow my conk.
Not. There's.
You.
No, sorry. Um, the regular council and special meetings, um, the goals training on Saturday, and then also the, um, Hanover.
Thank you, guys, for your diligence of meetings that you attend. I do have a public announcement with respect to the settlement of the agreement with Barb Swanson, a former city administrator. Uh, the city, city Montrose was finalized a settlement agreement with the city's former city administrator, Barb Swanson. Uh, after Ms. Swanson's termination on November fourteenth, two thousand fourteen. Agreements was filed on her behalf by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, uh, council, uh, number sixty-five, the union. Uh, during the grievance process, the city, Ms. Swanson, and the union participated in a mandatory mediation meeting. The city council voted three to two to settle the matter in order to avoid any unnecessary future grievance hearings and potential litigation. The process has been difficult for all parties involved. However, a majority of the city council believes this settlement agreement was the best way to resolve the matter. And more importantly, it's in the best interest of all those involved and the best interest of the city of Montrose. Uh, settling this matter allows us to move forward and focus our attention on the important matters that will make Montrose a great place to live and work. Uh, we will not take questions at this time in reference to that, but, uh, just to make that settlement agreement was signed fifteen days ago and is now, uh, considered a public document, uh, for the settlement agreement. Any discussion in reference to that from the council? Okay. If not, I will move to Personnel Committee. There is an addition to the agenda in reference to a new policy amendment, uh, with reference to a change to the personnel policy, the current city personnel policy. Uh, with that personnel policy, we're going to look at how we handle disciplinary actions. Part of that has to do to make sure that we first of all address whether or not those actions are formal or informal, uh, disciplinary actions. And those, uh, any issues that come up that are deemed to be matters of employee discipline need to be addressed to the Personnel Committee. The Personnel Committee will then adjudicate whether or not that will be a formal, uh, matter for disciplinary action or an informal. Informal counseling will be handled by our managers or members of the council of the Personnel Committee. Formal, which involves a letter of reprimand to be placed in the file or a, uh, a letter of management or a formal counseling session, uh, for corrective action or actions for terminations, will be reviewed by our legal team. So any formal disciplinary action will be reviewed by our, our legal team. The other piece of it is that we need to be more timely in addressing any disciplinary matters, typically within thirty to sixty days after we become aware of the incident or the matter. So that we're not, uh, looking at issues that have been sitting for some time. We look at the timely manner and how we're addressing those. Uh, these changes will serve to protect the city's best interest, uh, and its employees and agents. And then we will enact this as an addendum to that policy, pending a revision of the personnel policy, which will be done by the Personnel Committee in conjunction with the staff, the senior staff.
You're changing the personnel policy with who? The Personnel Committee and the city staff?
This is the Montrose Personnel Policy. This is an addendum to the Montrose Personnel Policy.
Okay.
So you have that addendum.
You do know that this was already in place, correct? Maybe a large portion of it was?
It isn't specific, and I think it needs to be addressed because clearly those matters were not followed.
And then typically within thirty to sixty days of knowledge? So if you find out, you're saying that if you find out about the grievance, you're going to give it up to thirty to sixty days to look into it and investigate it?
If we find a matter that comes our attention that's determined to be of, of a matter that needs disciplinary action, we need to act upon it within thirty to sixty days.
Don't you think that's a long time though?
It is a long time. What I'm looking at is, I'm putting a sunset on when we do something about things. In other words, we don't dredge up stuff that happened two years ago and expect to have any kind of activity be done in reference to that.
Correct.
We need to look at addressing matters of discipline promptly and effectively once we become aware of them. And then if they are matters that need formal discipline, they need to go for legal review after they go to the Personnel Committee. So we're looking at putting a sunset on it, not saying, well, you can't address issues. When you become aware of it, we need to respond appropriately and in a timely manner to those issues that we become aware of.
Okay.
And I'm setting out thirty to sixty days because that gives us two council meetings in order to address that. Okay? Does that, that answer the question?
It does, but I think thirty to sixty days is a long time for us if somebody has grievance. So has there been any grievances at all this year?
I have not had any grievances brought to the Personnel Committee since the issue with Bart Swanson. That's the last one we had.
Do you know many grievances that have been brought at all, Andy?
Uh, no, I don't, I guess in, depends on what you define that to be, because, uh, when you say grievance, that's a collective bargaining agreement phrase. So I would say, I don't know, complained or, or something of that effect. So I mean, as far as being brought, brought to us, uh, or the Personnel Committee, I'm not aware of any official things that the Personnel Committee has or.
You personally are not aware of any grievances that have been brought to you by anybody?
Well, there have been, there have been certain.
May have or should have been addressed?
There have been verbal, there have been verbal sort of complaints.
Well written?
Yeah, written, but it wasn't raised to the level of something that went before the Personnel Committee.
So, okay, so. Should it have been, I mean, how do, how do we determine? So if a grievance is brought to somebody, so say I have a grievance on what?
I think grievance is likely the wrong term here. If you have an issue or a matter that needs disciplinary action.
Okay, so if there's a matter that needed disciplinary action that has been brought to the Personnel Committee or, or attorney, how do you determine?
Well.
What you're going to do about it?
That's why it really, it really shouldn't be brought to the attorneys for action. We, we would do the legal review of it after it's been passed to the official sort of committee that deals with this, Personnel Committee.
Okay, but what if it was brought to you first and not Personnel Committee?
Well, under the old ethics ordinance, there was that language in there that talked about charging up an investigation. And so, so we'd be invited to have it. Now, you know, if there's something that comes to my attention, we've been able to discuss that with Personnel Committee. And then it's up to the committee to take further action, in my view.
And then from the Personnel Committee standpoint, the League of Minnesota Cities gives pretty good guidance as to what does rise to the level of needing formal disciplinary action.
So what do you consider a formal disciplinary action?
Formal disciplinary action is a written letter of reprimand, a, um, a formal counseling, which would be recorded with the counselor, or termination.
Okay, so what do you consider a formal complaint? A legitimate complaint?
The legitimacy of the complaint has nothing to do with it. If there's a complaint, they should be brought to Personnel Committee. The Personnel Committee will then evaluate that complaint, do the research and do the due diligence that needs to be done in order to effectively investigate that complaint. And then if it is found that there is disciplinary action that is needed, will determine what type of disciplinary action should be taken. And then if it is a formal disciplinary action, we'd submit that for legal review. And once it's been reviewed by the legal action, then we can take that action and discipline.
Okay.
And that disciplinary action needs to be approved by the council if it's a formal disciplinary action.
Correct.
Is that clear on where we're at with it?
I am clear, but I do know that there was a, um, a formal complaint made earlier in the year that was just brought to my knowledge that has not been addressed yet. So when you say thirty to sixty days, it's my knowledge that it's been four months.
What I suggested that we bring that complaint to the Personnel Committee immediately.
I know that complaint has been sent to our turn.
Again, bring that complaint to the Personnel Committee and we'll address it. Okay, and we'll address it in the manner that we've set for it, so that we're following the guidance that's put out by the League of Minnesota Cities, and we're following the law with respect to disciplinary actions for employees. That's my issue here, and that's why I want to make sure that we bring that to the Personnel Committee, so that that's properly adjudicated and then it's properly over, the oversight is properly done, but with legal oversight, to make sure that we have handled that in the appropriate manner. That's my issue. And I want to make sure that we understand how that process works. Any other discussion on that? I need a motion to approve the addendum to the Personnel Committee.
I'll make a motion to approve the addendum to the Personnel Committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Michelle, how do you vote?
Discussion?
Okay.
Can we vote?
For discussion?
I think it should be less than thirty to sixty days. I think it should be thirty days. If the complaint counts soon, you have one month.
To, to your point.
I think it's only fair.
There's no timeline on how soon it has to be, Anne. Timeline here is that it needs to be addressed within thirty to sixty days after we become aware of it. So once we become aware of it, we have thirty to sixty days.
I know what you're saying.
To address it.
Right.
If we want to address it tomorrow, we can address it tomorrow. There's nothing that says we can't address it right now.
Correct.
Okay, as long as we can hold an appropriate meeting to discuss that and abide by the old meeting laws, then we can review that as time prevents us to do so. I don't believe that many things will rise to the need of having an emergency meeting in order to address a disciplinary action. And we can set a meeting based on our, our open meeting laws that will fall within the parameters to address that in a timely manner. Okay, does that answer the question?
Yeah.
So it's not, you have to wait thirty days and then address it. It's you can address it in a timely manner, but we must address those within that thirty to sixty day window, so that we're, we're reacting to those complaints in a timely manner and we follow through in a timely manner. Any other discussion?
No.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor, first and the second. Michelle, how do you vote?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries five o to add this as an addendum to the Personnel Committee, uh, Personnel, uh, Policy, pending a revision, and it will stand as a policy. Uh, next we move on to the reorganization and structure of the city staff. You have with you a line and block chart. Uh, in our Personnel Meeting today, we addressed, um, the reorganization and to work on the structure of the city staff, to reallocate some of the work there, so we've got that covered as well. And also to look at how we would structure the city, uh, where we give it carte blanche or perfect world, be able to do that. Um, you'll see that we have a city council with a line and block that would address what I call pillars of the city. We'd have the administration, public works, the fire department, emergency management, uh, pillars that would be as those pillars. Far as the administration, uh, we are required to have an administrative clerk treasurer for the city in order to be our, uh, setup as a city. And then also a deputy clerk. And then we would have a clerk two, and that should be a clerk, is that a clerk three or clerk, clerk two on that one?
Well, there would be clerk one, clerk two, and clerk three eventually, you know, who would grow, but as of right now, it would just be.
The clerk two. Okay, so that clerk three should be adopted. Um, and then, uh, we'll address the hiring piece a little bit later here. Public works, we have public works director. We look at, uh, an operations supervisor one that we grow into a supervisor two. Uh, we'd have a wastewater treatment plant operator two and one, uh, maintenance worker two, and then a, uh, that actually could be ironed on as a maintenance one that we grow into a maintenance two. And then we have two temp seasonals. Fire department, we have the chief, um, the fire chief, chief two, and three captains, and then the fire department is below those. And then emergency management, we have, uh, your husband on that, Matt, could be our emergency management, uh, operations. Any questions on the reorganization of the city? Or the positions that were there? Any comments from Sean or Wendy as far as anything else that I, that did cover on that one? Pretty good on those?
Pretty solid, I mean, this is rare.
Okay.
See, one thing, Skip, uh, the emergency management, uh, I think at one time they were supposed to make a report, just like the fire department and so forth, like just simply have them add this or.
They did, they did that at council meeting. Matt Freeman gave a, gave a report. Yeah, Matt Freeman gave a report at council meeting, January.
He's supposed to hear it by.
Just for. And then with that, we also need to make sure that the new council people address their HMOs training while we're on that subject. Um, but any questions as far as that reorganization, that structure, that basic structure of the city?
So we're looking at hiring on?
We're looking at hiring on a clerk one that would grow into a clerk two. Looking to hiring on a maintenance one, but I don't believe that's right away, right, Sean, that's correct, that would grow into a maintenance two. And we're looking at, um, adding the operations supervisor position. And that would allow Sean then to be able to do more of a management piece of it than he used to do rather than the supervisory control of the operational piece of it. The fire department, pretty much the same way that Kevin has put that out to us. There hasn't been any changes on that, other than the fact that we adopted that structure that he gave to us the first of the year when he came onboard as chief. And emergency management needs to be a standalone department. Um, the other piece of that is that we will work on the job descriptions for those. We're going to work through the union to ensure that those positions are appropriate for the uni contract. Um, and also, um, need to look at whether or not the operations supervisor is required to be in a union position uh, based on the fact that it's a supervisor, whether it would be considered a management position. I think the issue is that management position being the uni positions per what we're under right now.
When the union contract comes up, twenty fifteen?
Yep, and then we also addressed at the Personnel Management Meeting that we would start those negotiations early, since we are looking at a restructure. We want to go ahead and start those negotiations early to look at where we're at down the road, so we can get that started now, uh, as opposed to later. And then Jill and myself on the Personnel Committee will attend a class, uh, in June on the fourth or the, fourth or the fourteenth. And we need to, we'll address that later, uh, for, uh, training on uni negotiations. So what I need now is a motion to go ahead and approve the tentative structure of the reorganizations for the city and the approval to allow them to flesh out those job descriptions. And also to, uh, do we need to address those hires right now? I don't think so, we've got that later in the, in the docket, but, but particularly, uh, the operations supervisor change as well, so we need to address that, that new structure.
Is there a plan though, as to who's going to go into each one of these positions?
Yes, there is, we have some ideas on that. Um, the issue is that we may need to, uh, open those up for a, uh, to the public to be filled. And so because of that fact, we haven't got a firm answer on that. That's a possibility is whether we need to open those up to the public. So I cannot say that we have selected anyone for those positions. We will select the best candidate to fill those positions. Our, our preference though is to hire from within. Because they have knowledge of the city and they come with, you know, a great deal of knowledge and background. So again, as our motion to approve the city organizational chart and changes with the addition of the operations supervisor.
I'll make a motion to approve the reorganization chart.
I'll make a motion to approve the reorganization chart with the addition of the operations.
Second?
I'll second.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
And Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries five o to adopt the new organizational structure with pillars and the addition of the operations supervisor. Uh, what I'll do is direct Wendy and Sean to go ahead and flush out those, uh, job descriptions and then pursue the questions that we had with respect to the union and where we're at with those.
Okay, and I do want to thank Sean for setting this up in the planning and planning plan.
Yeah, Sean did do an epiphany one night and this is a result of it, so it's a good thing. So it was late night thinking, I don't know what it was, but it worked absolutely well. Okay? Now, I guess we're on to, uh, personnel committee employee reviews. And Sean, you want to hit that up? You have some, uh, in your packet, you will see that you have a summary of the reviews that were done. We'll address your attention to those first.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. On page sixteen, I believe it is in your packet, is a summary of, uh, the annual employee reviews that we try to, um, accomplish every year in April, uh, being that it was a relatively mild spring and, um, we actually achieved that goal this year rather than as made as it was last year. Um, we have had an excellent year in the public works department and utility billing with our employees. Um, things are progressing nicely all through all the duties and all the jobs with every employee. Um, we conducted the reviews today in preparation for approval tonight. Um, as it states in the summary, the, uh, recommendations from the personnel committee to the council is for the, uh, recommended wage increases accordingly and we're looking for a motion to entertain that tonight.
Is there any further discussion on the reviews and the proposed wage changes? And I'd like to entertain a, a motion to approve the, uh, the reviews and the, the stated wage increases, uh, which are, on those are five percent in accordance with the step plan that's in place right now.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual employee reviews and the increase in wages.
I'll second that.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion carries five o to approve the annual reviews as written as well as the wage increases, which are, most of I think are five percent. Is that correct, Sean?
That is correct.
Okay. Uh, let me move on to hiring two seasonal employees. Sean, you want to give us a briefing on that one?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, we had advertised for approximately the last three or four weeks for hiring of two seasonal employees again this summer and the deadline was, I believe it was ten o'clock this morning for applications. We received a total of six, uh, total applications. Um, we had one returning, uh, seasonal employee that's expressed interest to working, for working for us again this summer and, um, I'm strongly recommending, uh, to the council for, uh, approval to offer a conditional offer, hiring him again this year at a rate of twelve dollars an hour. Um, Matt has been very well worth the money in, uh, last year and I don't see any issues coming up this year. Part of the bump to the pay will be that Matt will be, um, taking the other seasonal employee that will be a new hire, um, and teaching him the ropes of how to, uh, take care of the seasonal position duties whereas we've normally in the past, we've had our full-time employees take care of that. So that will alleviate some of the, um, pressure off of them to work together and learn the ropes that way. Um, we have narrowed the, the other, uh, seasonal position down to two candidates. Um, I tried in vain today to try to knock that down before the council meeting so we could, uh, make that also, um, but I did not get that finished. So I am asking the council to approve, um, hiring of the second candidate at ten dollars an hour upon the interview process and, um, go from there.
Okay. Why don't we end these as two separate motions? The first motion that we'll entertain is to authorize hiring of Matt Freeman as a seasonal hire. Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and make that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Uh, aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Uh, approval is granted to go ahead and hire Matt Freeman as a seasonal hire. Uh, next motion, I'm going to go ahead and make that one as well. Uh, motion to hire one of the two final candidates, uh, that have been selected for seasonal hire, uh, pending a, uh, approval of the final interview by Sean, uh, at ten dollars an hour for seasonal hire. Is there a second?
I'll second that one.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries five o to hire one of the final candidates, uh, after final interview with Sean at, uh, for seasonal hire. Um, okay, anything else on that, Sean?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Uh, my pleasure. Okay, uh, we already addressed the city staff reorganization. Part of that was the clerk one hire. Uh, Wendy, you want to give us an update on that one for Nicole?
Currently, we have a temporary employee from Spartan Staffing. Uh, her name is Nicole Sargent and our contract with Spartan Staffing, we will meet the requirements on this Friday, the seventeenth, we will meet the four hundred and eighty hours that are required. So we have the opportunity to hire her now instead of going through the staffing agency. And our recommendation is, is that the council approve hiring Nicole Sargent. She would start as a clerk one at the, um, bottom of that scale and work her way up. She's been doing an excellent, um, job and so that's our recommendation is to hire her.
What was it?
I believe it's.
Fourteen thirty-one?
Fourteen thirty-one.
Yep, and then she'd be on as a.
Clerk one.
Clerk one and it would be a one-year probationary period.
That's her full-time position?
Yes.
Yes.
Which is what she's doing now, she's doing a full-time personnel through the technicals.
Discussion?
We don't have any requirements as far as posting, uh, position.
Um, no, we can hire the temps as well as our, as our understanding, we're able to hire the temps.
Yeah, we talked about that management as well.
Yeah, and that's not a union position, so.
Right. Yes. Any other discussion? I need to enter, have a motion to, uh, approve the hiring of Nicole Sargent as a clerk one.
I'll make a motion to approve hiring Nicole Sargent as clerk one at fourteen thirty-one an hour.
Second?
Second.
Melissa?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
And Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries five o to hire Nicole Sargent as clerk one, uh, in the city staff. Okay, uh, anything else on personnel committee? We'll move to the engineer, regional park, Justin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, just a short note for you. This evening, us, uh, we're preparing, or I'm preparing the, uh, grant application through the, uh, Department of Defense for the grading of the park and I've got the appropriate clarifications I need from them, uh, questions that I had on the application. Um, part of the application does ask for things that the city would, uh, would provide to support the, uh, the military and their operations while they're here and obviously the more items that we provide, uh, the more favorable the application looks to, to them. So, uh, items that were on the application that I would suggest the city provide that, um, I, I believe you could, would have the facilities to provide would be, uh, city hall and our community center meeting room and office space, uh, internet access, telephone access, fax machine, and an office trailer on site. Uh, you know, an office trailer on site, we probably don't have one, uh, but we can certainly make arrangements to get one there. Um, that means giving a grant and them doing the work, so. Uh, my recommendation, uh, if you're agreeing with that, to, uh, to make a motion to provide the above-mentioned items of support and authorize the mayor to sign all the necessary documents for this ability application and, um, the publication, uh, that's required in the newspaper, official newspaper we publish, uh, this week on Thursday and the next week on Thursday.
Was there any requirement in that to provide housing or per diem?
Um, that was, there's no requirement. That is another option that the city can provide to strike the man application.
Well, I was going to bring up, and that might not address it fully, but another thing, I know it looks like, you know, you're listing technical things that we can offer, um, but in the, the Department of Defense is reviewing these applications, we may not quite understand this without a little bit of explanation, but.
Yep.
That we have an active beyond yellow ribbon network.
Oh, yeah.
So that we can coordinate some of those other resources, you know, food, housing, whatever it is to gallop all of that and whatever else, you know, that they might.
That's a great idea, actually, to, you know, bring that up in the application. I can, like, comment in there on that and my understanding in talking with them is, is, is the application really a starting point? We, um, as they review their, uh, the application, kind of then come together and talk back and forth on, you know, exactly, because I, my question is, well, how much office space can be, how much, twenty meals can be, how many people are we talking about, what kind of duration, you know? Those are things that we would discuss further. So I could certainly, you know, if you think that would be something that you would want to, uh, get at least a little bit on, I can put in partial on meals.
Yeah. I would say that we'd be willing to, you know, as part of that, with the Beyond Yellow Ribbon Campaign group as well as from the city as well, we'd be willing to support, uh, not completely offset, but be willing to support their, their housing and per diem.
And, and some of those things might, you know, be better for discussion down the road, but, um, even just letting them know that we have an active network. Um, I've been very pleased with the response that we've had, um, when situations like that have come up and obviously with enough of us, I think we could, uh, we could really work on some of that and it would be beneficial.
And I think it also highlights the, the focus of the community work that the service members do exclusively. Any other discussion?
Um, let me talk about the city offering, what do you offer, I mean legally, what can the city do?
Um, basically it would be to offset some of the costs of their housing and per diem cost and the per diem have to do with their food allowances and what, what they would need as far as what their food would be and then the, the housing cost would be how they can intend to house the people when they're here.
Right, legally, can the city do that or anything?
I see it as an in-kind, uh, project cost being filled by the city, uh, not the city contribution to a private entity certainly, but a kind of a project cost, just not expressed in dollars and cents by the city.
Yep.
Because what it's still, it's a significant, right, as you see on that.
It's a significant cost over a private entity.
Right.
And so that, from that standpoint, yeah, we, we're willing to support and that would be the motion of a lot of this investment.
Yeah, correct. That's what, that's what I'm saying.
Yep, I think though, I mean, that's a good question though, uh, okay, because I do think the city could sort of put a ballpark fee estimate on what is being provided, that makes up the auditors and I want to see just to have your mind.
And I think we probably need to get a little farther down the pipe when we get there, doesn't it?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. They always put some sort of, make sure we don't lock ourselves in any corners, but.
Exactly, but.
But indicate that we're willing to participate in a portion of it.
Okay. Um, I have a motion out there in reference to what we've just heard. Most of them have discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve the memorandum for the grant.
With the addition of the.
With the addition of the Beyond Yellow Ribbon and possible, uh, city.
For.
Contribution for housing and food.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
And Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries five o to approve that with the addition of the, uh, act of Beyond Yellow Ribbon group as well as the, uh, offer of support, uh, their housing and per diem.
Uh, second item on the agenda is phase one of the, uh, grading plan for the regional park and Sean and I have been working together on, on getting some, some activity going on, uh, phase one of the regional park out there. Uh, I guess, um, for the audience, we met, um, had a work session with the council at the end of February to talk further about that and, um, decided we wanted to try and do some grading and get some things going in the south, for the southwest corner of the park. Well, that's ear tag for, uh, for soccer fields and, um, a hockey, hockey rink location. Uh, it's kind of an immediate area. So we, uh, if you, you may have seen a bunch of construction stakes out there. Our surveyors went out, done, uh, staking to show what the proposed grades are so that Sean and his guys can kind of look that over and see what, uh, what's needed for fill material and, and how much dirt needs to be moved where. And, um, I know Sean's been working on a few other items, let's just let him explain those.
Uh, basically what we're looking for tonight, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, we discussed this, uh, phase one of this project in great detail at the end of February in the meeting there and upon reviewing the tape, the consensus was to prove, uh, approval to move forward and upon reviewing, there was no official motion made for us to, uh, proceed. So I meant, and we're looking for that tonight for a motion to proceed with phase one of, and the, I racked my brain and tried to figure out how the easiest way would be to, uh, proceed without identifying each and every specific parameters as far as permitting and engineering. So we had, uh, come up with a, uh, estimate of fifty thousand dollars, which would include grading, fuel, any equipment leasing, um, permitting, uh, engineering, and we're also looking at, um, entertaining putting a building on that site yet this summer for, uh, storage of certain different hockey rink stuff, um, kind of a secondary satellite maintenance facility, so to speak, that will be, uh, very much benefited on our end as this project evolves in the next several years.
And those funds are already in the park and rec fund earmarked for the regional park.
Correct.
Correct. This is just a portion of that.
Yep.
So if we could entertain a motion on that, that would be beneficial for us.
Any further discussion?
I'll say, oh, I'm curious, is the building already plotted on the map?
It is not. It's, uh, very preliminary. Um, we're currently looking at different plans, um, and the, uh, compliance with ADA and everything else for handicap access and, um, what we're looking at is a storage building for hockey boards and such during the summer months and actually a warming house facility, serve as a warming house facility from there to, I don't, we're putting this kind of investment in that, it's, um, very good that we look at putting a warming house in there at the same time. And it'll be, uh, bathrooms and electricity and as we all know, uh, utilities aren't cheap to bring in, so. I would say that that would be a good starting point to kick this project off and we will closely monitor that and keep the council updated as we proceed.
There definitely would be a place to throw a little hockey board if we're already done.
A little bit of update on that, um, we also received, um, six hockey poles that went along with that, so we've already seen some benefits on that that we didn't anticipate.
Okay. Got a motion?
I'll, I'll make the motion to approve, um, phase one for. I'll make the motion to approve Phase One, for any of Sean's for the grading and building of the regional park.
Second?
I'll second.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Get her done. And approval of those to start Phase One grading building for the regional park and the building that will serve as storage area for the hockey boards and warming up in the wintertime with public utilities and restrooms.
Hold on one second.
I need to take just a second, give me a break here so I can change.
As long as many of you had, you know, we haven't gone to a second disc before.
Be quick. I just don't want to.
You're ruining my, my time here.
Can we do so many? For a question? Give her a minute then before I start.
No.
And it was. But it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be better than.
This, this.
Yes. But it's still. Put that first question around here, pick up first, pick up that, and then of course. Here, so they get back here.
Okay. Okay, let's move to public work, we're ready on, if you get the motion and they vote on it, they will. Okay, good. Let's move to public work, region biosolids statement.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, other calls before you tonight. This is a project that Justin and I and Brad have been working on for several years, negotiating potentially the city of Buffalo accepting our biosolids. Biosolids is essentially a new term that has been adopted over the last few years that is more equal friendly. The old term used to be called sludge. And.
I've heard you use that.
I'm still old school, it's taken me a while to, to come to terms with that. However, biosolids is a product that is actually bacteria that's used in the treatment process at the wastewater plant. And it is a self-multiplying bacteria. And in the process, there is a, part of the process where we can take some of that out of production or else it would just continually evolve and upset the plant. I'm not going to get too technical. However, the plant was designed, there's a 600,000 gallon storage tank at the plant that we use to store the excess biosolids that we take out of the treatment process. And it had a design life of eight to 10 years. Well, through the treatment processes and the changes that we've done, we're pushing 15. And it is looking like we need to, there's two options that we can go with to remove these biosolids out of these tanks. Is, one is land application. Land application for biosolids have been around for close to 100 years. And it has become very, very political over the years. I don't care if you do it in my backyard type of thing. And closer we get to the metro area, the harder it is to achieve that. A few years ago, the city of Buffalo created a biosolids treatment facility where they take and incinerate it, and then they landfill it. And being the land application process is the way it is, especially in the metro area, the cost analysis between the two pretty much washes out with the environmental effects being eliminated. On top of that, I think it is a much, much, much better way for the city Montrose to handle their biosolids program. What we're looking for tonight is a motion from the council to proceed in the next step with the city of Buffalo is negotiating a contract, specific terms. And once we have that finalized, we will bring that back to council for approval. This is something that, like I said, we've worked on for several years and I believe there's other cities that have been interested. The city of Cold Spring is currently bringing theirs to Buffalo. They ran into an emergency type situation this winter where they ran out of storage capacity. And the city of Buffalo is helping them out also. But as we move forward, being that we're one of the first partners, I guess, to speak, to join on the Buffalo, it would be a great time for us to pursue that.
Do we look at delivering our bios, our biosolids in liquid form?
That would, that would be how we deliver it. This would also, part of the two or three year project, we've been budgeting money already for this project, so we're not running it in blind. We have money set aside already to do this. And part of that will be to either look at contract trucking or buying our own truck and hauling it. When we have, I'm always a firm believer that we'll do it ourselves. It, it gives us more availability to haul your own. As to where, it's a limited time for contractors.
My understanding is any other options are much more costly and much more time, they'll take a lot more time to, well, to do.
And the way that the MPCA is coming down, as far as applying any, for example, phosphorus on, on the land, we spend millions and millions of dollars trying to take it out of the water. And then we're putting it right on the land. Once it rains, everyone's right back anyway. So they're, they're strongly suggesting that we do the right thing also.
Any further discussion? Have a motion approved, moving forward with the biosolids agreement or contracting with the city of Buffalo and Montrose.
I'll make a motion to proceed with the next step with Buffalo regarding the regional biosolids to treat that project.
Second?
I'll second that.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd.
All right.
Motion to approve, move forward with contracting with the city of Buffalo to handle the disposal of our biosolids. Thank you, okay. Citywide cleanup day. Do you want to, do I need to address that? Do you want to address that?
Well, we addressed it at the last council meeting. We can certainly address it again. Citywide cleanup day is scheduled for May 2nd, from 8:00 to 12:00 p.m. That's a Saturday. We will be, same as always, there'll be different vendors set up at City Hall to accept various different items. On top of that, we will be offering the amnesty program this year. I believe we have to be, where residents have to be registered by the Friday prior in order to participate in the amnesty, the first part of the week of the second. And there is a $5 per item donation for the amnesty curbside pickup. And the amnesty will also be applied to that for two items. So if you have two items, you put it on the curbside, curbside for pickup from our department, it's going to cost you $10. And those proceeds will go to regional park development. There is a list of different items that are accepted and hasn't changed for the last several years. And there is, you have to be a Montrose resident that is receiving utilities from the Montrose.
That's what you mean by the registration by Friday?
That is for the curbside pickup.
Okay.
We'll be running around town, the guys will be doing that on and off during the week. I believe we still set up tags that will be addressed as items, correct, Ann? Any further discussion? That's, I'll certainly entertain the questions now.
I have a question. All donations will be used for the regional park project. We've had a question as to why is everything going to just regional park and not just parks? Considering we have multiple parks that need upgrades, so why are we just focusing on the regional park?
I did not make that determination. I don't know why it's, I'm a lot of said that.
Last year was the first year we did the amnesty program and it was, it was just decided to, I don't know, brought forward to go to the regional park. Certainly, it could be changed, it doesn't need to be the regional park.
There's a lot of parks on.
It should be a park and rec fund, because going through the national plan and park plan, there's a lot of concerns and upgrades that need to be done with multiple works. So it just should go onto that, I think, the park fund.
I'm okay with that, absolutely.
And we made a change. An administrative change to where the funds will be going forward for amnesty program. Siding of the city garage here in the park, the Boy Scout hut building as is affectionately known.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, Council, again, I believe it was the week of spring break, I was called on a Saturday afternoon, uh, that we had a curse vandalism on this building. And so I came in and was boarding it up. I started looking at it a little bit closer and a little bit closer. I was wondering, this building isn't full of water. Uh, the siding is in very poor condition. On the east side of the building, it is about to the point where there's no structural integrity left at all in it. So we looked at it, looked at it as an apartment to possibly re-site that in-house. And the material list just kept growing and growing and growing. And we're looking at roughly $2,500 to side it, and that doesn't include labor. This project is, I would anticipate at least a week, maybe longer if we were to look at doing it in-house. Not really a cost-effective project for us. So we look at doing a, calling some contractors to do, have it sited for us. Before you tonight, there are two different quotes. One is from Devil Exteriors. And the other one is from Joe Mock. The siding will be steel siding with pretty much any color we want. Preliminary thinking was that we'd match the building at the community center with the gray, which would probably require us to paint the garage here white, it's currently brown. And I would think that the Boy Scouts would be more than happy to paint it that way for us.
We will, and I can call off for that.
And there's two different quotes there, and we're recommending pursuing the quote that was provided from Joe Mock. I believe it was for $5,670, if I remember right.
Correct.
And he's about a month out of work. So the sooner that we can get this approved and move forward, the quicker I can get to him and get this done. Certainly before Montrose days, but sometime this summer. And it'd probably take him a day if he can do that, lift that out.
Have a motion approved?
I'll make a motion to approve the new siding on the river stream, going with the proposal from Joe Mock.
Second?
I'll second.
Jill?
Discussion?
Oh, discussion.
Thank you. I do have a couple of questions because I'm all for upgrading personally, I mean, there's issues and stuff going on with it. But there has been some questions regarding the Girl Scouts, yeah, has had some vandalism. They've had some repairs that have been done, and that came under Girl Scout funding. And they look for fundraising to do some of that stuff. So, because I know that the Girl Scouts replaced siding last year. And that was done through their organization and their troop. So is there any way that, you know, Boy Scouts are looking at doing some fundraising to help offset some of this cost?
Both of them are city buildings, that's.
Yes, I know, I realize they are. But the Girl Scouts are also looking at doing some changes to their building, building permits and all that kind of stuff, plus they are fundraising for that. Because that's what they have been told that needs to be done, as, because they would like to expand that building. Obviously, that's definitely upgrading the building, but anything that they are looking to do into their building, they're funded for. And like I said, the siding that was replaced was done through their funding. It was not done through city funding. Which I'm okay with, you know, upgrading our buildings, that's the stuff that does need to be done. But would the Boy Scouts be willing to maybe do a fundraiser to help offset some of that cost?
I can take that to a possibility. Question I have is with the city building, do we get anything from the Girl Scouts with reference to needing to do the replacement?
We've, no. As, I used to run the Girl Scout booth, and there was damage to that booth years ago through hail damage and something at that time. There, I don't know what the insurance deal was at that time, but no, it was not taken care of through.
Are you, are you talking insurance? There's no insurance on buildings because it's a city-owned building?
Correct.
There is insurance on the building, it's not for the city, but.
Yes, not to, not to the organ, that it would be through the city, correct.
Supporting organization for the scouts.
Right, it would be through the city. So the siding that was damaged and needed repairing was done through what should have been, you know, addressed through the city, was taken upon by the Girl Scouts to take care of that roof. So I'm just asking to offset some of the costs, would the Boy Scouts be willing to possibly do a minor fundraiser to offset some of this, of that building? And then, along with that, would that then be used, could we use it for National Night Out like we were not able to do last year?
Um, the issue with, was with the National Night Out, the only thing that happened with that, and my issue with it was that no one bothered to notify the Boy Scouts so they could properly secure their equipment that's stored in there before they had the National Night Out. We'd have been glad to go out and allow the National Night Out to use the building, and in fact, go ahead and get the keys to use the refrigerators in the back, having been notified. That was the issue. So I think it's a matter of notification of the organization to use those buildings rather than a matter of refusing to provide any services.
Right, I don't think notification was needed. It is a city building, the city should get to go into that building whenever needed, but.
Just a pointed question, Michelle.
Yes.
If you had things that were in a building and you had several people going in there without your knowledge, would you want to be able to secure them? Would you like to have them all just run in there wherever they wanted to?
It's the city staff. I, I trust the city staff 100% to go into our city building to see whatever's been there. So, but that was not the issue, was, I mean, that wasn't the problem. The problem that was addressed to me on tape was that the building was not stable for us to use from public views. public use. So when we do all these upgrades.
And I beg to differ, the problem, I regret, was that we were not notified when the city wanted to use the building, and we weren't allowed to put our items in storage.
Correct.
And then we asked for a notification. Second thing we asked for is what was the extent of the insurance on the building, so that we can determine whether or not we needed to provide a renters' insurance policy to cover that equipment in the event that there was a vandalism issue, or in the event that someone other than an authorized person went in the building, which we were reporting to us that there were unauthorized people in the building. That's why I brought it to attention else. In fact, that's part of the reason that why I ran for mayor.
I know that. So, just a simple question, is the Boy Scouts willing to possibly do a little bit of fundraising?
I already addressed that, I will pursue that and determine if that's a possibility.
Okay. I do, because I was not gonna be correct.
Will do.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Is there a motion?
We have it.
Okay. Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Actually, I'll abstain. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries five votes. Okay, partner rec. Wendy, you wanna address that any issue with the minutes?
I was not at the meeting, so maybe council member bought them. Uh, yeah, you know, I was attending some of that meeting, it was Brew and Jesse, a lot of Thomas, that were at the meeting, they just addressed working on the master park plan, that'll take, you know, two weeks to get that up and going. Uh, I don't know, I handed the minutes to Wendy, I don't remember what else I did. Oh, we talked about the Minnesota Explorer magazine, and how to get Montros involved in that, or into that, which we also discussed that at the retreat on Saturday. Brew is gonna be making the flyer for the, for volleyball, which is June 13th. Master park plan, they talked about different upgrades in different parks, and it's a work in progress, so, so long I have on that.
Do you need the motion to accept those minutes? No, I don't think so. Okay, then we have an ordinance, an ordinance for 2015 oh four, which amending chapter is 1072 and 1071 to allowing the existing residential, regarding these residential and B1 and B2 districts.
Jill is not able to be here tonight, however, she did submit the minutes from their March 18th meeting, which was the last time they had met, and held a public hearing on that amendment to chapter 1070 and 1071, which is the zoning of the B1 and B2 districts, which is along Highway 12. And they also discussed the solar energy system, so that was their minutes, I don't know if you had any questions on that. In regards to the ordinance amendment, she's put in a memo as to what it entails, they said it's, B1 and B2 is along Highway 12, it's our B1, it's like our central business, downtown business, and then our highway business. And what the ordinance amendment is looking at, currently, if you own a home on, in that district, it's kind of, it's considered a non-conforming use, because it's a business district. And by, by changing this or amending the zoning district, it will allow any of the homes that were built prior to 1984 to be considered a conforming use, so they can remain in their homes, is that, can I say that right?
Permitted.
So they get permitted use, so they can, right now, if, say, you had damage to your home, if you had a fire or something in your house, if it's more than 50%, our ordinance says you cannot rebuild it because it's in a commercial zone, this would allow people to stay in their homes, and if they had damage or, you know, due to a fire or something, they could rebuild it, they could expand it, they'd have to stay within the footprint, but they could at least rebuild their home and stay living there. It also will address, if you, I don't know if you can recall, we had a couple of homes along Highway 12 that were vacant for over a year, the ordinance said if they were vacant for over a year, they no longer could be considered a residential, they had to go to commercial use. That kind of constricts what you can do in them, so we have a couple vacant homes, this will allow people, allow the owners to go back to having, it be residential, so that they're not just sitting there empty. So, so the recommendation from planning and zoning was for the council to approve the ordinance amendment to chapter 1070 dash one and 1070 dash two, to allow existing residential in B1 and B2 districts.
Motion to approve 2015 oh four?
I'm in motion to approve 2015 oh four.
Second?
I'll second.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries five votes. To adopt 2015 special four. Kevin, I think we're up to you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. According to night, I have a monthly activity report for the month of March, and then a couple of motions that I need in regards to some personnel changes. Be, looking for a motion to accept the resignation of firefighter Jason Chafin's effective March 19th, 2015, be the first one.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Jason Chafin from the Montrose Fire Department.
Second?
I'll second.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye, angel.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
And Michelle?
Aye.
With regret, we accept the resignation of Jason Chafin from the Montrose Fire Department.
What if we all said no?
Well, we have to be aye.
It's okay.
Okay, Jill.
Next motion that I'd be looking for tonight is a motion to accept the retirement of firefighter Jim Turville from the Montrose Fire Department effective 3/31/2015.
He's too young to retire.
We, we consider retirement after 20 years of service, that's how my boy's done it, so.
I'll make a motion to accept the retirement of firefighter Jim Turville from the Montrose Fire Department, effective 3/31/15.
Second?
I'll second that.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries five votes, to accept the retirement of Jim Turville.
And both of them appear later on in the acknowledgement section, at the primary parts we have, so. The only other item that I have is just a reminder that this week is severe weather awareness week, the tornado siren should be sounding on the 16th, I believe, at 6 o'clock. So, if they go off, that's what they're for, if there is severe weather at that time, that would be postponed, so.
Do they also do one during the day?
Yes, actually, that would have been done last Monday, yep, last Wednesday, first Wednesday of the month, they do them.
Well, yeah, I didn't, I didn't know if they would have done one during the day on that day.
I don't believe so, I know most of your schools are doing tornado drills and stuff like that, but I don't know if the siren could be sounded during the daytime.
Just curious. I know at Cornell, they're doing two of them.
They, they might very well be, I'm just not sure. I know they're doing it at night for sure, daytime, they might be, so. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Kevin, appreciate it. Okay. Any old business that we have to address?
Not yet.
Move on to new business? Lake of Minnesota's Annual Conference in Duluth, June 24th and 26th. You'll have that information in your packet. I would encourage the attendance to that conference for council members, I think they provide great training and great experience, and also networking. So what I'd like to know is, right now, what do you need to know, who will be attending?
Yes, if you can let me know, maybe over the course of the next week or two, if you plan on attending, I will register you, so you just bill it through the city, but you will have to make your own hotel reservations, because I don't have a credit card or anything to reserve rooms on, so. You need to make your own reservations for a hotel, and they have all the hotels listed in here, so you can choose which one best, which one you like best at, at the hall. I think if you mention that you're there for the lead conference, they give you a discount rate.
And then it'll be all three days or just?
It's, it's all three days, 24th through the 26th.
What is the cost, what is that? Can I ask you?
Pardon?
The cost for, for example?
Yeah, I don't know if you have it in here, how much it is. Says if you cancel, it's subject to a $50 handling fee, but it doesn't tell you how much it is to start with. I can look it up.
Okay, so please go ahead and put whether you'll be attending or not attending to that as well. Buffalo High School All Night Graduation Party, I assume that's a recommendation for a donation?
In the past, the city has always donated $100 to the all-night graduation party, so if you want to continue that, you just need to make a motion to continue that.
Any discussion? I believe we donate $100 to the Buffalo High School All Night Graduation Party, I think it's a really good idea.
I'll second.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion carries five votes, donate $100 to the Buffalo High School Graduation All Night Last issue that I have is the vision, mission, and purpose. Saturday, we had handed out a revision for the vision, mission, and purpose, I'd asked the different ones to look at that, giving back input in reference to that, do I have any input that you guys would like to put into that, any issues that we have with it?
I think it was good, and it was a longer grammatical thing, but nothing, nothing wording wise that I would change.
Would you give me some help on the grammatical issues, then, I'd appreciate it.
My best.
There you go.
It wasn't, it wasn't anything.
Any other issue on that? And part of the reason for that is the statement that's on our website right now, is a mission statement, and not necessarily a vision statement. And I wanted to make sure that we address that vision, mission, and purpose on our website as well, so it gives a clearer idea of where we intend to be going, and what our, our mission is. And then we'll also look at fleshing out those goals once we start working through the capital improvement plan, which we discussed on Saturday, and timeline. Okay, so if you guys could please get that to me, I'd like to finalize that by the end of the week, if possible.
Council?
Yeah, if you want me to email that out to you, so you can do that electronic thing, and certainly do that too, I'll shoot it to Wendy, would you guys like that, preferably?
Yes.
If you would, go ahead and put your changes in red, so I can see them a little better, or any suggestions, if you would, that will help me to be able to do the edits.
If we want to take one step back to the lead conference, Andy phoned it, 325 for regular attendees, and he said 125 for new attendees? As long as we register by being first, so if you can let me know the next week, most of the most, then I can get our registration done.
Are we worded great?
Put me down, are you worded great, please?
Yes, put me down as well.
And, and my, my firm will have a booth up there, so we'll make sure to stock it with candy and everything.
We'll have to stop that. Upcoming meetings. We have the Taxation Board of Review, 6 o'clock on, on the, at the Montrose Beauty Center right here, April 27th, and also April 27th, 7 o'clock, we'll host a Town Hall meeting, that will be an open forum for the townsfolk, residents, and, and stakeholders. We'll focus on taxation and evaluation of property values, that will be all we focus on. If you have pointed questions regarding that, I would suggest that people should come to the Board of Review meeting, where we will be speaking with the assessor from Wright County. But certainly we'll entertain other issues if someone else has something else they want to talk about there. I think that's part of the process, that we want to look at being able to have a greater two-way conversation with the residents of Montros. So we'll be doing Town Hall meetings quarterly, and then we'll have a theme or a focus for those and try to address those, so that we can address that and help kind of channel those or focus those kinds. Having no open forum, let's move to acknowledgements. As Kevin said, we'd like to acknowledge Jason Chafin for 19 years of service with the Montrose Fire Department, and regretfully accept his resignation. We also want to identify Jim Turville for 21 years of service with the Montrose Fire Department, and congratulate him on his retirement. Tom Markton and James Tesari for successful completion of the state certification for fire apparatus operator as well. Any other acknowledgements?
I just wanted to acknowledge again, Sean for the organization and the city support that we're doing, all the public works, all their work with their reviews and everything, and Wendy for all the work that she's done to these council members.
I'd like to thank Martin Everstein and Andy Burke for their work on our audit, it was a pleasure to work with them as well, even though they had more questions for me than I had for them, but I appreciate the fact that, it was great to see a clean audit, and be able to put that behind us as well, and get a better understanding of our finance process. I'd also like to thank Mike McCain and Andy Tratt with Equipt Lammers for all their work that they have done to bring us through the settlement agreement with Barb Swanson, and I know that was a protracted struggle, and I appreciate all the work that you guys did on that. Okay.
On that, what is that, all of that, the public knowledge on that right now, Andy?
Yeah, I made sure to cover that before that, so we had the 15-day window after that was executed, that document, that couldn't be waived by anybody, there's, there's a statute saying that they need to be 15 days to renew that, and that will expire today, so it's been 15 days since that has happened, so that is now official. There was a 20, there's also 21-day review time, that's only accrued to Barb, and she way back to my signing, it was issued on March 3rd, so that one went out the window right away, but 15 days was in stone, so.
So everything is staying clear now?
Very clear.
And what exactly is all public knowledge?
So that document, the settlement agreement document is a public document, because it's the, it's the settlement of the whole grievance proceeding and everything, and there's, you know, the, the compensation that will get extended to Barb will, you know, is itemized in that agreement, so that's in there, we went over that at the last workshop in March, so, in a verbal fashion, but now it's memorialized in that agreement, so.
Okay, is there anything further? Motion to adjourn?
I make motion to adjourn.
There's a second?
Second.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Let's see, Michelle made the first, and Melissa made the second. Melissa made the first, Michelle made the second. And we stay in adjournment. Hey, Wendy made the agenda, you can clap for her.